And then, um, we can go in there and see if it's still set to exclusive. Because there's the master setting and there's the individual mailbox setting. Some of the individual mailbox, like Andy did that. Andy stayed on exclusive, which we figured out. Yeah, no news is good news, so. You sitting in your commissioners' court today?
I'm presenting something.
Oh, wow. Good luck. Hope it goes well.
Wow.
Incredible. Oh, wow. Uh, right now. Right now, today's good. The line's short. But in my opinion, go, um, go to the meeting. One after the week, because they're all supposed to send them in the office this week. Um, building the meeting, um. It's anything that would be back around, probably back to the floor. And that's, that's, we're obviously close to half our early vote turnout. And we're not even at the halfway point yet. So it's just statistically taking about earlier than it's going to last. I would say that it's gonna die down pretty good. I mean, today it's died down. David Times went to vote earlier and they were waiters long for a couple minutes. There's people who, there's people who brought folding chairs. Every time the line moved, they'd pick their chair up, move it with them. And then when they wanted there to vote, they're carrying that thing in with them. Got walked out carrying a plastic folding chair. It's been fairly busy. But I probably do in the evening. And you, uh, you check the line before you leave today? It's just hard to know. I mean, they voted Saturday, they're gonna be slow and they voted way too people. But when I checked the public count today, I mean, the total, over five thousand people. And there's thirty thousand registered votes, like thirty, thirty-three thousand registered votes in the county. So, I mean, usually past about half of your turnout, I think, is early vote. And so, judging by that.
Sorry, I mentioned you, but literally.
She, she would've told you the same. I would've told you the same, what did she say?
Yeah, we have good business, ninety-eight. And he's a cop, right?
Okay. Judging by that number. Till what we're gonna do, total for early vote. And with, with a week and a day down so far, I could agree well, not at the halfway point. The odds are that it's gonna die down pretty good. Unless everybody votes early, then I'll vote somewhere like that. If very little's happened, then I would be okay with it. But I doubt it. I think that'll happen. There is still just a little bit of, of that, that crowd that only votes all election. Have you gone and voted yet?
No, I haven't.
Do you like your rest time? Can we have a few rusters, yeah?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not Smith now. I was Smith, but when I first came home, but you're not. I'm enter, I'm, I'm kind of on the edge. I'm right at sixty-four, I'm forty-two, so. I'm always red.
So you're almost, you're like right as close to the line.
Yeah, my, where my dad is, our family land. Uh, there's like a third, not even a third, it's less than, it's less than a quarter of it, it's in Smith County.
Oh, man, so you have to text on both sides.
Is he picking on you already? Sorry, I don't have any. Don't need to shut the bowl.
She says that's the only reason.
That must've been a wrong.
Like to call this meeting of the Rush County Commissioners Court to order. It is ten A.M., it is October the twentieth, twenty-twenty. Like to ask the Honorable Bill Hale to lead us in prayer. Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings that you give us. And we especially thank you for the love, grace, and forgiveness that you give us through Jesus Christ. Father, we thank you for the cooler mornings that we've had and, uh, and fall season. Every time we have a change of season, we just know that you're still in charge of everything. We are thankful for that. Father, we ask that you be with our, our courthouse family and community and those that may be sick or bereaved. Especially ask your blessings on those who are suffering from the coronavirus. We ask you to bless them with healing and just pour out your blessings on them. Father, we, uh, we live in a turbulent time right now in our nation and in our world. We pray that you would help us to turn from our wicked ways and seek your face. And we pray that you would heal our land. All these things we ask that Jesus hold in there. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
First item on the agenda is to possibly approve, discuss possibly approve, latest amendments in our transfer. Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Whitworth, second from Mr. Kirkendall. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Number two, approve the October twentieth, twenty-twentieth employee payroll.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Gibson, second from Mr. Whitworth. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. I'm gonna jump to number thirteen. Discuss possibly approve the group bid recommendation from Good Springs WSC Board to award contractor services for, uh, Texas CBDG, CDBG, number seven-two-one-nine-three-nine-oh. We have a letter there in front of you from Sister Stan Hayes. How are you?
Doing good, thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, we publicly advertised the project for bid. This is the CBDG project that y'all are undertaking on behalf of, uh, Good Springs Water Supply. They have three areas that, uh, we're replacing existing small diameter lines. And, uh, we advertised and then took bids at the water supply office on Thursday, October eighth, at two P.M. We had eight bids submitted. I have a spreadsheet before you, uh, which summarizes the bid results. Uh, just to quickly show you how to read this, I'm sure y'all know that, uh, on the left-hand side, we have the different areas and the items. And then you'll, the units are LS is lump sum and LF linear feet, EA each. So you take the quantity in the second column. And then each contractor has a unit cost in the first column and a total cost in the second column for that line item. So under area A, item one, we have three thousand seven hundred and fourteen linear feet. The furniture is all four-inch water running, tracer wire, ProSyl. They have a unit cost of five dollars and twenty-five cents per foot. For a total cost of five twenty-five times the thirty-seven fourteen gives you the nineteen thousand four ninety-eight fifty. You then summarize down to the bottom and you have the total amount bid, uh, indicated at, at the bottom of the page with the double line underneath it. So the low bidder was ProSyl Construction, uh, with a Dallas address. Uh, Brad Webb is the owner of ProSyl. He has a Henderson address. Uh, Mr. Webb, uh, submitted with his proposal, three or two projects, uh, for references. Uh, he indicated his business had been in business for one year. Uh, I had Mr. Webb bid another project about two years ago under the name of Paragon, uh, Construction. Before we got it awarded, they dissolved the company. He is now ProSyl. He had one rural water project, uh, for his one year of, uh, operation. I contacted the water supply as well as the engineer for that project. And we received a very negative, uh, recommendation, uh, indicating the project was way over scheduled. Uh, the inability to complete, uh, just equipment, personnel. So they would never, ever recommend or allow, um, ProSyl to undertake another project for them. The second bidder was D and D Pipeline. Uh, they're in Longview, Dale Dodson. Dale Dodson was Excel Utilities for a number of years, did a lot of big work in utility work as Excel Utilities. Uh, he had three, two partners, they had it falling out. And, uh, he started Excel Utilities LLC. There was a lawsuit and he's now operating as D and D Pipeline. I have, uh, D and D Pipeline on a project for Greg County that is very similar to this. Uh, project was to be completed, he's over, overdue. Um, we're about out of time, actually the end of the month. The county and the state contract is up and we are still not complete as of his last test, but he's fifty-eight percent complete. The third bidder is John Wright Construction, which is a local contractor, uh, visiting with them. Of course, done a number of projects throughout my thirty-something year career with me. I've never had any issues with John Wright. They said they have a crew available, like to have the price. Uh, their bid is two hundred and twenty-six thousand sixty-one dollars. So the low bidder, ProSyl, is one eighty-four, one hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine. Uh, D and D Pipeline's two hundred and ten thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And John Wright is two hundred and twenty-six thousand sixty-one dollars. The budget, uh, for the project has, I believe, two hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred dollars available. So if you were to award it to the low bidder, there will be extra funds available. Second bidder as well. With the third bidder, it will go over the available funds of some seven thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Uh, I had discussed that possibility with the, uh, Good Springs Water Supply Board of Directors. And they indicated they would, uh, supply the additional funds if necessary. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Is this federal money, your statement?
I believe it is federal money that passes through the state. We get it from the Texas Department of Agriculture.
Are, are, are you fairly confident that the state will accept this bid if we do? Since it is the, the third from the lowest bid and it's actually almost forty thousand dollars more than the lowest bid?
I certainly cannot speak for the state. I did run it by the grant administrator, uh, Grant Works is your grant administrator. So they are aware of my recommendation. Uh, the state rules indicate that you will award the contract to the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. And given the recent history of the two low bidders, I personally have an issue with making that recommendation to you. That's why I did not do it.
Yeah, I understand totally.
I, I have to use my best judgment based on the information I have available to me. And in my opinion, the lowest responsible bidder is John Wright Construction.
Yeah, and I agree a hundred percent. But my, uh, my question really is, in your experience in doing this, do you feel confident that that bid will be accepted by the state?
Well, in my experience in some thirty-some odd years, I had one grant project that was very similar to this, a Gill Water Supply in Harrison County. We, uh, I recommended they pass up the low bidder, they went with the second bidder and he filed bankruptcy on us.
Which one? The low bidder or the second?
The second. So, I don't have a very good track record. We've done it before, I guess would be the answer to your question, uh.
Well, I guess at worst, they'd just send it back?
That's what I would guess, I guess.
Re-bid it maybe or whatever?
I don't know exactly what action they would take other than, other than some of us noticed that it was, uh, not allowed. Provide additional documentation to support our decision is what I would expect. At most, I would expect that if they don't like my letter, then they will ask for additional information first.
Well, I agree with you a hundred percent, but I just know sometimes how the state.
Yeah, they do, they want you to go with the low bidder. I just do not think, I, I have a, just a professional opinion. I, I, I do not believe that it would be in the best interest of the county to proceed with ProSyl.
I agree. Any other questions? I move we approve the bid recommendation. However, any of that is in your precinct, so why don't I yield you all that?
Well, I, I was just gonna say, I, I've spoke with several of the board members that echoed, uh, the same response. That Mr. Hayes has, has told us as well, so, uh, I'll second that motion.
All right, we've got a motion from Mr. Hale, second from Mr. Whitworth. Any other discussion?
Won't you swap those?
All right, I'd be happy to.
I'll second his motion.
Don't matter at all. We got a sec, we got a, uh, switch on that soon.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Stan, thanks for coming.
Thank y'all for the opportunity.
You helped a bunch. All right. Discuss possibly approve the district attorney's forfeiture report. This shall be exciting. Well, Greg?
All right. Who all would like copy of the report? I have printed out one for each. May I approach Judge?
Yes.
So this is our annual asset forfeiture report. Um, the first thing that I did for this report is I went to the district clerk's office and had them run, uh, search through net data for all the pending disposed of and filed asset forfeiture cases for the period from August thirty-first of twenty nineteen to September first of this year. And they ran me a list which had one, two, three, four, five, six pending or filed cases and two disposed of cases for us county. Next, I went and got each of the petitions in those cases or if they were disposed, the judgments. And I used that information to fill out the asset forfeiture report on the county general's website. As you can see on the first page, beginning seed funds, eighty-four thousand dollars. That is what's left over from last year, auto-filled in from last year's report. On the next page, it has the amount seized by other agencies during this quarter. One thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Next, you have B, which is the total amount of forfeitures pending, which is ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. F is the amount returned to defendants and respondents, that's seven thousand dollars. That is the amount listed in our judgment, um, signed by Judge Gossett and cost number twenty-seventeen-one-ninety-two and twenty-seventeen-one-ninety. That's the amount given to the defendants. And then the amount three thousand five hundred and twenty-nine is what's put into the forfeiture account for our, uh, county attorney's office. Forfeited funds, section two, lists the beginning funds in the forfeiture balance. And the next page has those funds that were forfeited, including the interest, which I went to Ms. Rebecca Akers in the auditor's office to get those numbers from her. As you can see, the amount forfeited and received by our agency is four thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars. That's with the interest of twenty-five percent. And the amount forfeited and given to the other agencies was four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Section four, which these pages aren't numbered, um, it is about the forfeited property received. And in this year, we have one vehicle. And that vehicle is still pending. And we had several cases, five total, with firearms. Some of them had multiple firearms. And we still have three cases pending with firearms and two that were disposed of. The expenditures by our agency on section six are three thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. And I believe that is used to supplement Mr. Craig Sweeney's income. He is our investigator for the district attorney's office. We did not have any other expenditures from our agency this year. Does anybody have any questions about the report? This was signed by both the auditor's office, Rebecca Akers and Mr. Jimmerson once it was completed.
So the beginning balance for the year was eighty-four thousand and the ending?
Seventy-six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's in the seed fund, section one.
Looking at the fund that you store?
They can be used for any and all law enforcement purposes. That's a very broad answer, but that's what we, um, that's what the law says. So it can be used to supply law enforcement agencies with, um, more vehicles, training, anything of, of that nature. Anybody have any questions?
I move we approve the report.
Second. Motion from Mr. Kirkendall to approve the report, second from Mr. Hale. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Eric, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, thank you. Before we discuss possibly approve memorandum of understanding for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one between Rush County and Nekata. And basically the same as it was last year. Thank you. There's no monetary. We make a donation to Nekata, this, oh, about five thousand dollars. They have their program.
I'll make the motion to approve that memorandum.
Second. Motion from Mr. Gibson, second from Mr. Hale. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Provide, discuss possibly approve Rush County Library System to Hire Replacement for the children's services position which was vacated due retirement on October thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
Good morning.
How do you do?
Good morning. So this position is based out of our Henderson location. It is a full-time position. It's, uh, just trying to give a background of what, what all that position does. They will, um, slot books and media for all children, so pre-readers through young adults. They, um, offer lots of, lots of programming options. So currently, right now, this location does well. In a normal year, we would offer a weekly storytime. They have an after-school program called ROR, which is reading and overall academic achievement and recreation. Uh, it's an after-school program that targets case, uh, kindergarten through fifth grade. Typically, they get second to third graders. Things they've done in the past, they've taken tours of the newspaper office, they do crafts, they have STEM activities. Uh, they also offer, um, we've done a science fair in the past. They have, uh, Family Place, which is a nationwide network of children's librarians, um, who embrace the fact that literacy begins at birth. Uh, and they help match families within the community with other, um, community resources, professionals, pediatricians, nutritionists, anything that a family might need. And, and in order for us to be a part of that particular program, we have to have certified people. And our current person has been offering, we've been offering Family Place for at least two years now. But it's a, it's a pretty big five-week program when it's actually in session. They also, um, handle our summer reading program, which is for children's twelve and under. And just to kind of give you guys an idea of what happened in twenty nineteen, because that's a normal year for us. We had for this location, only three hundred and twenty-three children were registered. They had about a hundred and eighty complete, which is about right. And this position is very hands-on with community, families, children. They're constantly in the children's room, they're constantly homeschool, families that are coming in. So even when school is in session, there are still a lot of children and families who are coming in to use that area and talk with the children's person on their expertise for anything that they need. So I'm, I'm here today to ask for permission, our current, our current children's person is retiring at the end of October. And I'm asking for permission to post this position so that we can get someone in there so we don't have a lapse in service for our. for our families and our children of the community. Um, and I would like to point out for the twenty twenty-one budget that we did cut one of our twenty-nine hour positions, particularly for that location. And so we're, we, we did go ahead and make that, that cut for the next year budget.
How many positions are at the location?
Full-time, we've got currently, one, two, three, four, five. We've got five full-time positions. And then part-time, we have, um, two that run our circulation. One that goes back and forth between circulation and children's, um, one that is solely on children's. And then one that handles our genealogy, which is a, a big thing for this particular location. So we've got five. Which we should have six part-time, but like I said, we let that one go. So we've got five. And not all of those positions work for the twenty-nine hour for the part-time. We do have one or two who are below twenty-nine hours.
How's your traffic been over there?
It has actually been, it, again, it's not normal. Nothing's normal right now. But it is actually, it has been increasing, even as far as checkouts, people coming in. Uh, there's still quite a few families that, that come in, not, not as many as normal, but I'd say we're probably half, half the workforce of the way back to, to our normal traffic.
Do you have what you see as a future for the library with the change in the way people do things now?
So I, I've kind of always felt that for libraries, we're, we're evolving, we're ever-evolving. You know, it's changed from twenty years ago. It's changed from ten years ago. But to me personally, I feel that libraries are the center of our communities. They're where people go for information, for entertainment, to learn things. And it may not be the traditional learning where they go and check out a book, but it could be a program that we're offering where no one else is offering that. So speaking, you know, specifically for Macmillan, because that's where I have been housed for the past five years. You know, we offer things during the summer that no one else in the Overton community is doing. So we've got what we call foodie fun during the summer, where people can come in and they get to experience different foods and how to cook those things where they normally, you know, probably wouldn't try it. But it's a free space in order for them to come in and learn those things. You know, we've offered lots of health programs before. Um, it, it's just, to me, it's a place where people can come in and see things. So traditional services, public libraries in general, are probably moving away from traditional services where you come in to just study. But we're a place where people can come and learn things that they don't have the opportunity to learn those things in other places. Sort of a cross between a learning center and a community center.
I think a children's position is always important. And we, we will get back to normal someday. That's what we have to believe.
Yes.
In my opinion. And, uh, we always need to take care of our children in, in everything, as far as I'm concerned. And I would, I would make a motion if we give permission to post that job in our replacement.
I have a motion.
Ken, is this, on this right here, uh, is this something that you thought needs to be replaced right now?
Yes. Yes, if I.
Traffic you're having?
Yes, because they are still, we're still offering not in-person programming, but they are still offering virtual programming. So they are still doing weekly story times. We do have someone who is, um, doing after-school, um, online virtual programs. And there's still, you know, collection development and having the people who are coming in, having someone who is familiar with the collection and what we offer and just a, an outlet for them that they can come and ask questions of. We still have all of that going and it is still all being legalized. Um, I, I'll be honest, I know where we're at in the budget. If I didn't think that it was imperative for us to have that position, I would hold off for a couple of months. I wouldn't come in and ask. But because it's children's and because I know what all they're being asked of from the community, I do feel it's important.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from Mr. Hale, a second from Mr. Kirkendall. Any other discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you all so very, very much.
All right, Jane. Number six, discussed possibly approved joining Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing.
I think Sourcewell is a, is a, like text buy and tips and taps, uh, and, uh, another one of those organizations that bid products out.
I'm making a motion for approval.
Do you know something about this, Greg?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the Sourcewell is, is like, as you said, it's like the, like boards and all that stuff. And going through down this and close, like, the back door is going through them.
Is, is there a fee paid every time you buy something or is there annual fees associated with it?
Anything associated with it.
Right.
No, so I would.
How they operate?
I, I don't know if that's, they pay the fees or somebody pays the fees or something, but it's nothing to the count.
That's great. I'll second the motion. Motion from Mr. Gibson, second from Mr. Whitworth. Any other discussion? He convinced me. All those are in favor, all those opposed. Motion passes. I know you might check into more work for him. Number seven, discussed possibly approved the following commissioner court minutes for September twenty twenty. Special meeting September third, twenty-third and twenty-eighth, regular meeting on September fourteenth. Gibson, have you read these minutes?
I read those minutes.
Can you move for approval?
I'm gonna let Mr., I'm Mr. Hale do that.
I also read them. I will move for approval. Second from Mr. Gibson. All those in favor, all those opposed. Motion passes. Number eight, discussed possibly approved the following reports for September twenty twenty. Justice P. Precept four. Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Whitworth, second for Mr. Kirkendall. All those in favor, all those opposed. Motion passes. Discuss possibly approved the following pipeline utility reports. Atmos Energy proposes a place. Integrity dig under or within the right of way of County Road one twenty-eight, precinct one. Um, move for approval. They've already, they're working on that, probably completed it yesterday, I imagine. Have a motion from Mr. Hale, second. Second, Mr. Gibson, all those in favor, all those opposed. Motion passes. Um, FHR Crockett Acquisition Company LLC proposes a place of replacement six-inch pipeline under the right of way of County Road twenty-one forty-four, precinct two.
I looked at where they have it flagged, where they are going to do the, uh, board, uh, moving, we approve that.
Yes, could we change that to I and B? Yeah, it needs to be a B. All right, um. Have a motion from Mr. Kirkendall, second, second from Mr. Hale, all those in favor. All those opposed, motion passes. And then should be C, Sabine Oil and Gas proposes a place. Four-inch saltwater line under across the right of way of County Road thirty-one, three, three-one-seven south in precinct three. Second, Mr. Kirk, uh, Mr. Whitworth, all those in favor, all those opposed. Motion passes.
Could I, could I say one thing? Because I mentioned that these guys that are starting and were probably completed with that before we approved it here. We can give verbal permission for that work, because sometimes it works very time-sensitive. They got a leak or something. So I just wanted to explain that. I, they contacted me a week, last week, and I gave verbal permission. They got right on it and got it fixed before we actually approved it here in court.
Okay. Number ten, public comment, no action to be taken. Sure. We're good. Pay shows this Thursday, is that right?
Correct.
Six-thirty at Dex, six-thirty at Dex.
Just want to remind everybody, early voting is still going on. Uh, when I checked the numbers yesterday, we had voted about fifty-two, fifty-three hundred people so far. So we're, a lot of people, um, turnout's incredible. A lot of people are coming. Uh, check the lines today. They're dying down a little bit. So you got people who are still looking for a good time to vote. This week is a really good time. Let's see, you got your, uh, voters, there you go. Yeah, it's, it's looking like that the line's dying down. They're open till seven, uh, till Friday night this week. So this week could be a good time. And then they'll be open next week as well, this, this Saturday. So just want to remind everybody that all that's still going on.
Yeah, they are open this, this Saturday, is that right?
Yes, sir, eight to five.
Eight to five. And then it ends next Friday.
It is next Friday.
If we used to say in the open.
Yes, sir.
Friday week.
It's about, closes at five next week.
Close at five next week, next week, all week, uh, Monday through Friday is, uh, eight to five.
Anybody else?
The, uh, long-term harvest facilities are in their show with the exposed center starting tomorrow.
Which is really neat. I'm glad that they contacted us to go over here. Uh, that's a, that's a, like a four-county show, if I remember. Uh, Greg, you never came and touched it.
Right.
Then came to our outstanding facility over here, brought their kids and their parents. That's going to be, it wouldn't surprise me if Greg came and didn't build a facility similar to that in the near future, but cause it comes over here to this.
I said it was shocking if they didn't have it over here next year.
Well, that's possible.
And it's Jennifer. Told, told us at one of the meetings, they are taking special precautions to let that, let that event come to Rush County and do the things that need to be done for the safety of the kids and the folks that are showing the well-blowerer, fifty percent occupancy.
Well, well, our fifty percent.
Very good, very good. Anybody else? Maybe the line's got, uh, Kewell Friday night. Well, certainly very dirty tonight. All righty. Number eleven, approved payment of bill. You go get that look, Greg. She puts that look on there.
I will tell you all, so we've had some issues with guttering at the depot, museum, causing water to come back in. And that David is can somebody give us a bid on that? We've got two more to run, but it's going to be about fifty-two hundred dollars. We can maybe, maybe, but they'll gut it up.
Is Jan B. it's gonna go?
Hey, you got two or three bids. Where do you go out from bid? It's fifty-two hundred.
I'm making motion to pay the bill.
Say.
Second from Mr. Hale, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes. I move adjourn. Second from Mr. Kirkendall, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes.